At this time, we will call the August 7th School Board Meeting to order. You'll stand for the place. At this time, I need a recommendation to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, I recommend that the board should approve the agenda.
For Ocelton's recommendation, do I have a motion? Make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I want to say we've gotten off to a great start. We are on day six today, and it's been going really well to have several schools, and been getting great reports from each one of them as far as a very smooth start. And also, today, I would like to ask the board, please consider property contract matters in executive session. Property contract matters for executive session. I'd like to do that, and I would appreciate it. And we are honored today to have several educators here in the crowd talking about getting off to a good start. Like I said, they're on day six. They just completed day six, and I know they're ready to go home and relax after day six. So, we're going to introduce them and recognize them, but at the same time, celebrate them. It's always great when we can celebrate our educators. I will ask our Director of Primary Schools, Ms. Jenny Tredway, to please come forward this time as we start the recognition.
Thank you. Thank God for letting me do this. Um, I wanted to start by giving you some background. So, a core leadership role, in my opinion, is someone who rises above the status quo. Our Department of Education offers literacy coursework. You can't hear me? Technical difficulties. I'm gonna start over, okay? Thank y'all so much for letting me honor these ladies. And I wanted to kind of give you some background. So, a core leadership belief of mine is to reward the educators that rise above the average expectation. The Mississippi Department of Education literacy courses that they go through Aim Institute, they align the Science of Reading and Structured Literacy. Many elementary teachers did not receive this critical Science of Reading knowledge while attaining their undergraduate degree. These educators continue to model lifelong learning to their colleagues and completed thirty-plus hours of coursework outside of their regular school day. And I refer to this elite group as my teachers and my administrators who visited their schools. So, today, we will honor half of our team DCS, Aim Structured Literacy Rock Stars. I'm gonna call your name, and if you'll just come up, and Mr. Ocelton's gonna hand you your certificate. I will stand by. Ms. Maria Wright. Lady Gomez. Ms. Lori Burns. Ms. Tanya Yarborough. Ms. Hannah Hall. Ms. Jennifer Todd. Ms. Rhonda James. Not here? We'll get it to them. I love this one. Ms. Haley Bryant. Ms. Jennifer Legan. Ms. Stacy Morgan. Ms. Charlotte Wade. Ms. Cicely Campbell. Ms. Erin Harris. Ms. Linda Larson. Ms. Leanne Williams. Ms. Jennifer Hattonhead. Ms. Tori Carter. Ms. Patty Pullman. My apologies. Stephanie Weathers. Ms. Audrey Young. Ms. Tish Hunt. Ms. Shay Oakley Steele. Ms. Jamie Parrish. Ms. Ashley Phillips. Ms. Candace White. Ms. Greta Stevens. And one administer, Ms. Tara Skelton. That's awesome. Get a picture?
Yes, all-star group right there. We want to get a picture of all y'all together, if we can. Please come to the front. And we can put, we can have pictures on the stage, too.
Y'all get in the middle.
That was just halfway through because we had to split it up into two groups. We had so many things to recognize. And so, we're so proud of y'all, and we just wanted to thank y'all for all that y'all do for our students and all the rock stories, and all the reason of why our schools are so successful. We appreciate all that you do. And look, they can hang around if they want to, right?
Sure.
But if y'all, we're about to get started with the rest of the meeting, so we've got a long to go. That'd be a great time to go. Y'all have a great day. Make sure, but I think that's what we're trying to work on, make sure you say that. Yeah, yes. So, our report is great, and it's always great to go.
And a wonderful announcement. At this time, we have the adjournment report.
Yes, ma'am, and I have nothing to report today.
Thank you. Hey, now, we need to approve the minutes from the July 17th Board Meeting. I need a motion and a second.
Okay.
And a second?
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I need to approve the consent agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made to the consent agenda? Being none, do you have a recommendation, Mr. Ocelton?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I recommend that the board to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Ocelton's recommendation, do I have a motion for the consent? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Now, on to new business. The item A, we have the tax levy order FY 25-26. That's Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. With this being the first board meeting in August, this is normally our board meeting when we ask the board to approve the tax levy order, and this year is no different. I did want to start today by giving a brief presentation and also ask our tax assessor, Mr. Jeff Bitch, he's in attendance today, and I'll ask him to come up in just a moment. But I wanted to go over a few things regarding state funding, local funding, expenditures, things of that nature. First of all, the state funding for this school year. Last year, we received two, over $219 million from the state. This year, we received over $221 million, which was an increase of $1.8 million. If you look at the percentage increase and the rate of inflation, you'll see that it was less than the rate of inflation. So, when we're talking about the teacher salaries, just the step-up raises alone, I mean, we're not talking about a raise, we're talking about the step-up raise that we paid. I mean, that itself costs about $1 million. And that's, so that's taking a big chunk of the increase before we even get to that point. So, that does create a stressor for us as we're budgeting for the school year. Also, with state funding, and I'm gonna preface this and say, this is not, I'm not blaming any of our local legislators or anything of that nature, I will be bringing this to their attention, but when they adopted the new formula, the school funding formula last year, they showed us a spreadsheet of ten years into the future where we could, that way, we could plan for the future, and we would know how much money we're getting. So, you'll see how much money we received, but we were expecting over $225 million, which was like a four billion of what we were receiving. The reason I'm saying that is because that's what was on the sheet, but as we're learning, is I believe part of the formula, it's intended on the schools asking the local taxpayers to pick up part of that tab. That's not something that we want to do as a school district, and that's something that we'll bring up with our legislators, because I know our local legislators didn't have that intention. They felt like they were helping us out with the new funding formula, but this is gonna be something that we bring up, and hopefully, they can get that corrected moving forward, because that's $4 million less than what we thought we were getting all year, all during the budgeting process, and Miss Hadley did. And I'll stop right there and thank Miss Hadley for all that she doing and making do with these shortfalls. All right, some specific items that we have here in Sodo County Schools, and I wanted to make you aware of, and this is where the local expenditures come in, the local teacher supplement. As you know, there's a state teacher pay scale, and for example, a beginning teacher in Mississippi makes $41,500. They have no experience in, and a single A certificate. In Sodo County Schools, our teachers all have a supplement of at least $7,700. So, let's say a beginning teacher, they started here, they would make over $49,000 instead of $41,000. And then, our more experienced teachers get over, up to $8,500 per teacher. And that's something that we've done from the local level. We, our board, I want to thank y'all for approving the increase this year. We've added $3,720 since 2021. These are recurring expenses, so when Miss Hadley is making out the budget, look at the bottom line number there, that's $23 million per year investment. So, right off the top, local money, 23 million is going to the local supplement. That's not your entire salary, but that's the local supplement that's added on here. School resource officers. We've got a great partnership. We have three agencies that work with us on that, the Hernando Police Department, the Olive Branch Police Department, and the Sheriff's Office. We, as a district, pay $70,000 per officer for our school resource officers. This year, we have fifty-nine officers. We have one in every school, and we have two in every middle school and two in every high school. And so, I want to thank the board for being proactive with that. This is something that we started doing years ago, and it's something now, it's a great benefit for our students and our teachers and our staff, but it's also an expectation because we've raised the bar there. And so, that's something every year that we know that we're gonna be spending over $4 million a year on school safety, on school resource officers. Obviously, can't put a price tag on school safety, but at the same time, we are spending that money from our local taxpayers. And I put those up there, the first two along with the next one I'm gonna put up, so taxpayers can see how we're spending that local money and that it's going to good use this one. Excuse us. One other item, this is something that we started just a few years ago, is a school nurse in every school. And you'll see, we've got one in every school, and actually pointed out, or was it you that pointed out that, or Mr. Sullivan?
Probably got two of them.
Yeah, we've got two in our three largest high schools because the volume of students is there. And so, with that being said, you know, we want to make sure that they're the first line of defense if something were to happen on campus. You know, they take care of all the minor things that go on, but at the same time, they're there in case of a major accident also. And now, with that being said, our local operation funds is where that comes from, from the village, and last year, we received $119,839,888. I'm gonna pause right there, and I want to thank Mr. Jeff Bitch for being here today. And Jeff, if you would, if you'd like to come up and address the board, he is, I reached out and invited him, and he was excited about coming here today to speak.
Always excited. Appreciate you inviting me, sir. Great to see all y'all. First of all, I want to say, proud graduate of Hernando High School, did all my life here, and my kids are graduated here, and I hope my grandchildren do. So, y'all do an incredible job, and thank you very much. Also, my wife and my daughter works for the district, that's right. I'll give a little brief discussion of why I'm here and why it's been such a difficult year for everyone, Ms. Stacy, to try to get this figured out. It's difficult for the county, it's difficult for the cities as well. But each year, we've had incredible growth for the last ten to fifteen years in Sodo County. We've always relied on a minimum of 3% new growth, and that's always sustained anything anybody needed on a local and county level, and school level as well, I think, because no one's had a tax increase in a long time. Two things make up taxes, our assessment and the millage rate. So, our assessment, we have kept steady over the years. We, like I say, we've relied on the new growth. This year, we, we went, we exceeded our expectations with this new increase. We went to almost $3.5 billion. We were about $2.7 last year. But the reason for that is, the Department of Revenue, they audit us every year, and each year, and this has been in place since 2007, we have to show them that we can have at least 85% of our tax value to the market value. We've always been able to do that. The last two years, we haven't been able to hit it. With the incredible growth of Sodo County and the city, we went, we was only able to hit 56% this past year. So, this is happening throughout state. We're on the same exact schedule as every other county and state, and we're blessed to be in the fastest-growing county and state by any means. And so, when we implemented the new millage, excuse me, the new table to price everything out, it increased about a 40% increase across the board. So, that being said, the most that any tax entity should be able to collect, other than a few stipulations, is 10% over the previous year. So, therefore, everyone's having the lower the millage rate. In doing so, it's a very, very difficult tabulation to come up with the exact amount of money so that you can capture that, we had 3.2% new growth this year, capture that new growth and not exceed your 10% and stay in there, wouldn't keep taxpayers happy. So, that being said, it's, let's say, it's difficult. And folks are blaming everyone from the state level, the income tax law that passed, they think it's part of that, but it is not. So, what we have to come up with is a formula and a millage rate that keeps everyone happy. But I will say this, in capturing new growth only, lowering the millage rate to where it needs to be, capturing new growth only, everyone's taxes is still going to go up slightly. And the reason for that is, everything is affected by millage. Car tax, business personal property, public utility road, mobile home road, anyone that was over 65 in the 2024 tax year and prior that had the home state exemption, their taxes are frozen. So, anytime the millage goes down, their tax bill goes down. So, with that amount, and it's quite substantial, even the 3.2% growth didn't equal out to the amount that we lost or will lose if you lower the millage rate a certain amount. So, everyone has got to make up that difference, says a normal taxpayer, or on businesses and residential. So, even though your budget may stay flat or even a little negative, there's still gonna be a small tax increase, and it's unavoidable, so.
Anybody got any questions?
You did explain that, that made really good for somebody's business unsavory. I don't agree with that.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate you coming in. We've heard everything, but as my mother says, money's eaten and meat fried.
Yes, sir.
We didn't hear any of that.
There's a lot of misinformation out there, and that's the facts right there. What you had to do is, the state made us do it, we'd be in compliance. And this is, I'm now twenty-six years in the Tax Assessor's Office, this is the first time we've ever had to do this, because like I say, we've stayed steady. And the question has come to me, and I've been accused of not doing my job for letting it get the real profit, what we had assessed for, and what its actual true value is. I didn't intentionally, we didn't need the money, and if we were to incrementally, over the last ten years, say, raised it 5%, let's say, if we'd had at least that much increase in value over the last ten years, if we would've done that every year, we'd be at 50% higher. No one would've lowered their millage rate, and we'd be paying all the extra taxes. If we do it this way, the millage rate has to come down, and it just saves everybody a lot of money.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Looking out for our board's interest, because I'm like you out here, everybody out here saying all kinds of different things. Now, you made a statement in there, and one of the options they're gonna look at is basically trying to keep revenue neutral.
Yes, sir.
In other words, what we received last year would be that. And so, if I heard you correct, if we keep it at revenue neutral, the school tax will still go up no matter what our school board does.
No matter what, you would have to go into a negative. I had calculated it, Stacy might know, but if you went to where the taxes are exactly the same, you're gonna lose several million dollars.
And we couldn't have our infrastructure like we have, paying teachers, but the revenue neutral is still going up, is what we're saying.
On a regular taxpayer, it's going down on over 65s. You know, the home state exemption is in place, it's going down. And, you know, it's gonna go down probably about as much as the rest of ours goes up. It's gonna be nice for those folks.
Well, the reason I ask that question is because that's what we try to do each year, is to stay at that level anyway.
That's right.
And taxes don't go up. I just don't want our board members to get blamed for a tax increase when, if that's the route that they decided to go.
Sure.
No matter what route they decide to go.
You can't go negative, there's just no way for you to go negative. There's gonna be a tax increase for the Muslim folks, it just is. It's unavoidable.
Okay.
Unavoidable, that was, yes, sir.
Appreciate you clarifying that.
If we go with that 119, is that with growth or without growth?
That number that's up there is our revenues from last year, and that includes growth. Last year, we requested, at our, at our August 2024 Board Meeting last year, we requested 116.9 billion. So, that other 2.9 million, Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that would be, that came from growth, because that's what our revenues were.
That's right, yes, sir.
And so, what we normally do, and Miss Hadley does a great job of this, of balancing out, you know, what our revenues were from the year before, and then that's what our request is for the following year. So, yes, that number up there includes the request we made plus the growth from last year.
Mr. Bitch, you had mentioned the millage effects, car tax, other things like that. How, if we reduce millage, how is that going to affect those items as well?
In the same manner, so it depends on the value of the vehicle, of course, everything in the personal property that the companies turn in, it's dependent on the value. So, depending on how much each one carries per mill, and that particular value of that item is gonna go down. I don't have an exact number for you, but...
Car values aren't gonna go up, so if we reduce millage, residents will actually see their car tags go down.
Absolutely. Of course, I drive an old car, I won't buy a new, but if you drive new cars, it would be quite substantial, that it's gonna go down. It's gonna be very beneficial to those folks.
We're obviously gonna be looking at options that are gonna reduce millage substantially. What about in the future? I mean, because once we lose mills, I mean, as superintendent, I know as board members, we get nervous because not only do we have to pay our teachers, and we want to pay our teachers more and more each year, but we've guaranteed them, okay, once we add that $1,000 pay raise, well, that $1,000 pay raise is there this year, is there next year, as we talked about.
Yes, sir.
No going back. And so, what are your thoughts on that as far as this millage rolling down, you know, where does that affect us moving forward?
It's like I told our county board supervisors, like I'm gonna tell y'all, like I've told the C's, I don't want you to go negative and have to do a millage rate increase next year. Let's get it over with, let's get everybody set, and we'll be good. Even if you did the, I'm not gonna get into your business, but even if you did the higher rate over the 119, if you did the 122, it's not gonna hurt anybody that much. The most, what Hernando said the other night, and I've calculated theirs, on a $300,000 home, which is about the average price of a home now, Hernando's looking at about a $200 increase on the city taxes on a $300,000 home. It'd be about the same for the schools and the county if they go to that, they go to that rate. So, you're looking at about, on a $300,000 home, $600 a year, $50 a year.
All right, but my next question then, but the closer we get to that 119 number, there's been options close to it.
Yes, sir.
So, the closer our board members get to that, the more it eases the tax burden on our homeowners.
It does. Absolutely, the lower you go, the better it'll be for them. But again, I'd rather this year be our bad year, get it over with. But again, I'd rather this year be our bad year, get it over with. The heat has been on, and I don't want it next year. So, you know, I just don't want you to have to raise it next year if it comes to too much of a short loan. And, you know, no one knew that $5 million was going to be short for the state, $4 million.
And like I said earlier, that's not our legislators' fault or anything of that nature, but it's one that, somewhere in the, the way they calculate the formula and things of that nature, there'll be something to address with our legislators, and hopefully they'll be able to help us out. I know they always try to. I want to thank you for being here.
Appreciate you guys. We're going to work through this, we're going to be fine, everybody be good. I'll take the heat for y'all. Y'all are doing great, I appreciate you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, so now, so back to the tax levy order, which has, you have three options in front of you that were provided to you. And I'll put these up here on the screen so you can see them all. You've got the, the first option, one is a nine-mill decrease, which would, 122.7 million to 9.6 mill decrease. Option two is 120.9, 9.97 mill decrease. I'd like to, we did that one, I'd love to round it up to 10, but if we round it up to 10, we're losing money, so it's 9.97. But that was 119.827994. And I'll bring that back up, Mr. Barton asked about growth. So the bottom number is what our, what we requested last year plus the growth, that's the revenues, it's a little below it, if you notice, it's a little bit below it. The reason we did that, and Miss Hadley and I talked about this, is we could have looked at that option and been a 9.96 mill decrease, but it would have been a little above that number. And if y'all are going to go at level funding or revenue neutral, I want our board, everybody to know the board went revenue neutral when it came to operational funding. And it would put us actually just a little bit below what we received last year. We would anticipate that 3% growth that he talked about, or maybe even more. The other two options, as you look at there, they're all within 2% increase. All of those are, you know, within that number, you know, they're close to it. But we put that together, and I want to thank Miss Hadley and her team again for looking at all those different options, and now, put it up here for y'all.
The question I would like to ask for everybody to hear the answer to is, if we do go with the 9.97 mill decrease, we're, I mean, we're still okay, we are still, I mean, you know, that's my question.
We would be going into fund balance of about almost $7 million more.
As opposed to?
Three.
Three.
Say, repeat what she just said, what did you say?
Almost $7 million, it is 6.8 billion more than the 3.2 versus the 122 million. And that's just this year, I don't know about next year.
And some of that is dependent on growth, yes.
Thank you. Just simple matter, looking at that, if we go with that 119, and we're talking about reducing it to 20%, that's significant, very significant. As a taxpayer myself, I would say that our school board is being physically conservative if you did that. I don't know how, I mean, I don't know how anybody would say anything with any of those, to be honest, but with that one, like you said, that's a huge decrease in millage.
So we've got like 34,000 students, 4,000 employees, 43 students, got to check in, I think this teacher's level, I really think that's part of our major option, not personally.
Is the?
What option?
The third one, is that what you're saying, the level one?
Yes, the level one, option three, that's. So we've got to look out for it, mainly here today, that is our students' first half, everybody.
I agree with Gerald.
We have surplus, and we've worked hard over several years, and it's not like our bills go over that, we're going to start sending cash back and back, no.
Probably not. I will say, that's, being conservative with your money sometimes is used against you because people say, oh, you have a large fund balance. At the same time, you have a large fund balance so you can absorb some kids from time to time. I know in 2020, we're fortunate to have that, and that's the reason y'all have a policy also in place that we, that our fund balance cannot go below a certain number because y'all want to ensure that it stays above that number.
I will add, just for sake of that, and for knowing that we have discussed this for many weeks now and not, but not nearly as much as Miss Hadley and her team. So thank you very much for doing that, thank you, and the financial thing that came before you that has given us that ability to do what, to be able to go in funds and keep this level funded. But with that, I'd make a motion to accept the 119.827.
And need a recommendation from Miss Russellton?
I can recommend it, I'll recommend the option three, which is a 9.97 mill decrease in a request of 119,827,994.
All right, with Miss Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Once again, I want to thank y'all, and I want to thank Miss Hadley and her team also for all that they do for our district.
I'd like to say that we will continue to be physical with our company, you know, regardless of what we have, because we do have the leadership we have, thank you. All right, I have a question. Item B, request to pay vendor, Horn Lake Intermediate School, Mr. Williams.
Ma'am, in your packet of the letter from Horn Lake Intermediate School, with supporting documentation from the county principal for question approval of pay vendor for commodity received, issue has been addressed with the bookkeeper and staff put in place for the future occurrences, but we're asking the board for permission to process the payment.
With that explanation, do you have a recommendation, Miss Russellton?
Ma'am, Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request to pay the vendor at Horn Lake Intermediate School.
With Mr. Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, the motion passes. Item C, request to pay vendors at Horn Lake Middle School, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am, in your packet of the letter in supporting license, pay for the principal at Horn Lake Elementary School, request an approval to pay vendors for commodities and services, issue has been addressed at the school level, respectful of the request of approval to process these payments.
With that explanation, do you have a recommendation?
Ma'am, Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request to pay the vendors at Horn Lake Middle School.
With Miss Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the payment?
To make that motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Item D, request to pay vendors at Lake Horn High School, please.
Miss Ma'am, in your packet of the letter from the principal of Lake Horn High School, request an approval to pay a vendor, the matter has been addressed at the school level and respectful of the request of approval to process this payment.
And your recommendation?
Ma'am, Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request to pay the vendor at Lake Horn High School.
With Mr. Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion to pay the vendor?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Item E, request to reimburse employees, security employees.
Yes, in your packet of the, with a statement of approval to reimburse 30 employees for GAT expenses, we've addressed this matter with open belief and with requesting your permission to process these reimbursements.
Okay. Based on that information, your recommendation, sir?
Ma'am, Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request to reimburse the employees for security.
Miss Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve? I make that motion, do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Item F, revised board policy, IDDC homebound instruction program, Mr. Trump.
Yes, ma'am, we're asking to revise this policy to reduce that no longer.
Right, with that explanation, your recommendation, sir?
Ma'am, Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy, IDDC homebound instruction program.
That recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Righty, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item G, personnel changes.
Yes, ma'am, personal packet, it changes 1 through 12 of recommendations, ages 13 to 17, the personal changes. Age 18 is a memo from myself, question to add, one new kindergarten unit to Lake Horn Elementary School, based on numbers. Age 19 is a memo from myself, replace a five, a full-time teacher assistant at Lewisburg Middle School to two part-time positions, not DC back in half hour a week, and we paid on the DA pay scale. Age 20 is a memo from myself, to agree of activating a part-time retired employee. Age 21 is a memo from myself, on Saturday corrections for the 25-26 school year. Age 22 is a memo from the Sky Show Director of Special Education, going to add one occupational therapist, which is reviewed to increase in students' needs. Age 23 is a memo from our Director of Athletics, Jenkins, on the boys who will be higher professionals this year, volleyball at Lewisburg High School, football at Lewisburg High School, and land at South Eden High School. Age 24 is a memo from the Sampson, our Assistant Superintendent, is to request to approve additional paid for an employee who went three hours over, both paid to board approved, it was two on summer communit, that was at $30 per hour. Age 25, also in Sampson, is best approved additional paid for an employee that went 16 and a quarter hours over, described to board approved, it was summer communit, $30 per hour. And then pages 26 through 30 is a memo, and best additional paid for the Sampson, and request to approve a $2,000 supplement per section for teachers who will serve as district satellite teachers to fill current vacancies.
Righty, with that information, your recommendation, sir?
Ma'am, Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented.
With Mr. Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Mr. Russellton. Item H, residency appeals, Mr. Trump.
Yes, ma'am, that item is being discussed.
All right, thank you. Now we've come to the part of our meeting where we welcome public comment. As the board, we welcome public participation at our board meetings. While this is not a debate setting or a question and answer session, we've reserved this time at our regular board meetings for public comment and for citizens who have requested to approve. Board policy allows 30 minutes for public comment. Public comment involving student matters or personnel matters must be heard one at a time in executive session. Each person who wishes to comment will have five minutes to speak until the 30-minute time limit is reached. When I ask for public comment, please state your name, and if you have a student matter or a personnel matter, please state that information as well. Do we have anyone who wishes to comment? Do we have Mr. Glover here? Will request your opinion. And now I need a motion for consideration of closed session to determine whether the board should enter executive session for the following matters, residency appeal matters and property contract matters. I need a motion from.
I make a motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, Mr. Chase will come back and inform you whether we stay in executive session. The next board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 21st at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.